Call the order of the August 10th USD 350 school board meeting. Welcome, bidders. Appreciate you coming. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yeah, I need to add one item for milk bids. We'll just do that right off the bat here. Get that out of the way real quick.
Okay.
It's an action item.
All right. We need to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion to approve the agenda as amended and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Okay, consent agenda.
I have nothing unusual to report on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm in. Board approve the consent agenda is presented.
Second. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Okay, patron comments.
I have a letter here that the teachers have requested we do for patron comments. I'll just hold off till we get to that agenda item if that's all right with you guys. And if you guys need to say something about that issue, we'll do it then.
Okay, we'll move on. Okay, business items. First on the agenda there is face coverage.
Milk bids.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Milk bids.
One here from Cisco. Sondre, can you talk us through why we normally don't do this, but why are we required to do it now?
When we had our review, not last school year, but school year before, for procurement purposes, we have to get bids now for the milk. And the district last year did, we did purchase our own cooler. So it makes it feasible for us to get outside vendors because before the cooler was owned by Highland. And now we own our own cooler. And, well, when we had the review, we had to get our own cooler. That was part of the review. So during the procurement, because now we're required to get and purchase whatever is the cheapest because it's federal and state dollars.
So they've got a bid price per unit for unflavored milk. Cisco is $14.89 per unit and chocolate is all the same price. For Cashway, unflavored milk is $13.20 and for chocolate is $13.75. So it's pretty clear that Cashway is a cheaper bid. I recommend we go with Cashway for the milk. I would recommend, I have a motion to approve that.
Second. Any discussion on the milk bid? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I?
All opposed? Same sign? Okay. Next business item is face coverings.
This has been a difficult issue to wade through. I know there's strong emotions on both sides of the issue. The recommendations from all the medical professionals is pretty clear that we need to require masks in some form in our school. KSD guidance, they recommend it for all students. We're recommending not going directly with the governor's order. Why would we not just do what the governor has directed us? One example is, well, it's too restrictive and it requires masks for even our three-year-olds. Every single student. And also, there's no leeway for, if we have kids at recess, they're still in school facilities, they need to wear a mask. There's no leeway for that for a teacher working in their classroom. During their planning period, they're in there for an hour. We think there should be some leeway for us to make those decisions that, yes, we're not, we're not intermingling. We can make those decisions as we move along. Also, with the Kansas work group, the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kids is what this group is. Medical doctors, medical professionals, they put together this guidance for for the reopening plans for our state. Their guidance here, while they recommend that all students K-12 schools wear masks, they do say that younger children under 10 years old are less likely to be super spreaders or even significantly transmit to their peers and adults. It also says that when young children are asked to wear masks, the compliance is low, they're messing with it. And to quote them, "When manipulated frequently, masks may increase high-risk touches to the face, which can increase the risk of transmission." So there may be situations where our younger kids, our five-year-olds, are constantly fiddling with it and that's creating more of an issue of disease spread than just not having a mask. So we want the leeway to be able to say, okay, if there's a problem here, we can deal with that. We'll do our best to get all the kids in masks. But to be able to tell parents that they're required for every kid. If your six-year-old can't deal with a mask, we're going to kick him out of school. And that's what the recommend, or requiring every kid to wear a mask. So we're going to do our best. So that's where we landed on our recommendation that masks are required for all staff and students in grades five and up when social distancing is not possible and recommended for all students. And then we would have certain exceptions. So I'm asking the board to approve this operations plan, this basic operations plan. We did approve this without the mask line to revisit today. We've been talking through breakfast. Breakfast is another change. And I'll review a lot of these other changes, but that was in our basic operations plan. We're looking at just doing to-go breakfast. So we would send breakfast home with kids at the end of the day, eat in the morning at home tomorrow, rather than trying to deal with early arrivals and when the bus gets here and mixing kids together. That's kind of where we've landed. So I'd request a motion to approve this basic operations plan, which includes the mask requirement and that change for breakfast. Oh, I'm sorry. Before I ask for that motion, did you guys want to say anything or did one of you want to read this?
I can read it.
Okay. And they've seen it. I sent it to them so they've all, assuming they've all read it.
All right. Dear St. John's School Board, first of all, thank you for your service to our students and schools. We appreciate your experience and the time and effort you are taking to make educated decisions for our school community. We would like to ask you to support Governor Kelly's mask order for school districts this year. With the uncertainty in current health situation created by COVID-19, it is important to go forward with a strong plan to best meet the needs of our students this school year. Educators and students need to know the school board is supporting them in their fight to keep COVID out of their schools with the first step of wearing a mask. According to the CDC and World Health Organization, both health agencies recommend wearing cloth masks to help stop and prevent the spread of disease. What may have finally convinced the CDC to change its guidance in favor of masks were rising disease prevalence and a clear understanding that both pre-symptomatic and asymptomatic transmission are possible, even common. Studies have found that viral load peaks in the days before symptoms begin and that speaking is enough to expel virus-carrying droplets. And we included in there the links to these if you'd like to see them. An article by NPR quoted a study in which families wore cloth face masks before being diagnosed with COVID-19, which reduced the risk of transmission by 79%. In addition, in a survey we sent out on August 4th of 2020, the local KNEA received a response from 42 USD 350 employees out of a total of 77, a response rate of 54.5%. Of those who responded, 72% were teachers, 42% were paraprofessionals, and 47 were classified personnel. And then we have a graph that displays pre-K all the way down to 12th grade, all staff in the non. And it indicates the percentages of, like, percentage that we want preschool should be masked, that the staff thinks there should be masks involved. As you can see, only nine out of the 42 responses, 21%, believe in no masks, while the rest, 33, which is 78.5%, believe in face masks. 50% of those believe in those face masks from kindergarten through 12th grade. These are our children, our coworkers, and our community members. Any precautions we take, we take on their behalf. Please require the wearing of masks by all staff and students of St. John's USD 350. Thank you for considering the many implications of this decision as you vote. And we would ask that you vote to be in support of requiring masks for all students and staff. Respectfully, KNEA.
Any more comments on that subject?
So have we received the masks that we ordered?
Not yet.
Okay. Do we have a way to get kids masks that may not have them if we don't get those?
Not everybody if we don't get them. Those kids are just going to have to provide their own until we get them in. But I think, I think they're scheduled to be here the 24th. So it's going to be cutting close. So again, I just, our opinion is, my opinion is that Governor Kelly's order is just too restrictive. We need some leeway there. Highly recommending masks for all the kids, but only the firm requirement from fifth grade and up and allowing some exceptions. I think is the best way to go.
If there's families that are younger than that that want to, is that going to be a problem?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. We're going to work with those kids and we're going to give them all a mask and we're going to try to work with them and have everybody in a mask.
No, but I'm asking under fifth grade. If there's families say, hey, I want my kid running faster.
Yeah, we're, yeah, even younger than fifth grade. We've got enough masks ordered to put them all in masks. And we're going to try to get the ones to wear it. If we can do it, we'll do it. If it just doesn't work out, then we have the leeway to work through that. Like I said, we're not going to kick a six-year-old out because they can't wear a mask. Just unable to do that.
So something that you, I think you alluded to last week. We're going to strongly encourage teachers to get outside and get kids masks off as much as possible.
Yes.
We'll do anything we can to make that work.
We've got a recommendation from Mr. Meyer. Do we have a motion?
We're just approving the operations plan completely?
Yes. Yep. And it includes that mask requirement and then the change to breakfast.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the basic operations plan as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the table and a second. Any more discussion in this matter? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five, five to two.
No.
There we go.
Seven.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I was too fast. I stand corrected. Motion carries seven, oh.
I was like you, Carl. I thought there was a delay.
There was a little delay there.
Let me clarify. You both on Zoom voted in favor of the motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I did.
Motion carries seven, zero. Okay, school reopen.
This is on the agenda as a an action item, but I can't really recommend that we move ahead with this because there's, we just, we need time to sit down with all the staff and work through some of these things before we can really approve it. So my plan would be just to bring this back to you on the 24th when we when we have more time to hash some of these things out. So we went over the goals before at the last meeting. I won't rehash that. And then we'll have that basic operations plan that we just approved. And then the rest of the plan would be more specifics of what is onsite learning? What does hybrid learning look like? What does that mean? What is remote? We have remote for individuals. So those kids that families choose, I don't want my kid to come to school for whatever reason, they're going to learn remotely. Now, the plan would be, in an ideal world, we're doing, we're having a kid on Zoom at home and I'm doing my second period lesson with the rest of the kids. And that kid follows the same schedule. I can take attendance. I know the kid is there. If we do that, then no additional logging of time is required. If we're just getting material to the kids, they have to do it on their own time. We still have to make daily contact with the kid, but then the families need to log that time in order for us to count them as a student. So we can't just send homework and say, we'll count you as a student, we'll get funding, and we'll see you later. This spells out all those expectations. Our stable groups, trying to keep kids in their own grade level, own group as much as possible. Masks and face covering. So this will get a little more clear about what are the exceptions? What does that, what does that mean? Important fund ways where we can get outside and take breaks from the masks. Some of those things that we've talked about, more specifics here. Specifics about temperature checks and screening. Everybody will be required to answer these questions. That's really a screening on their own at home. If we have visitors come in, we'll have those questions available for them. And washing and sanitizing, physical distancing, all of these things are the things that are in the governor's order. Just adapted to fit what's reasonable and workable in a school. For example, the requiring six feet apart and the line down the hallway is just not not workable without having three staff members to supervise that. And then the protocols, nurse's office, and then we'll have an isolation room. If a kid exhibited symptoms, then there's a separate room that they'll be in so they can be picked up by the family. What happens if we have an individual with symptoms? Spells all that out. What happens if we have a case? Defining the close contact, we'll work directly with the health department. This spells it out on the recommendations, but it's going to be a phone call to shame to say, okay, what are we doing here? And then when can they return to school? Depending on the situation, if they were tested and they were, they did not have symptoms or they had strep throat, they didn't need to be tested. The doctor said they didn't need to be tested. But if it was negative, all the timing on all that. What happens with students in the household? You have somebody test positive. And then what happens if we have a a case in the building? Spells all that out. Things with facilities, extra signage, hand sanitizer available. Our cleaning, the drinking fountains are shut off. We'll just have the water bottle fillers. Some bullet points for all these spaces in our building. How do we do morning arrival? And some of this is, just like I said, that we just changed the breakfast thing today. We found out. We changed our plan. So that changes what we're doing here. So really, 7:45, 7:50, the doors are locked. And then we'll unlock them and kids report directly to the classroom.
So that will change the bus routes?
It will. Bus routes will be a little bit later. So then we won't have kids here early and have to worry about mixing the grades. How to get your student during the day, people to call and we'll walk them out. Limit people in the office. Visitors, we're going to really limit visitors in the building. It's going to be hard for some of our birthday parties. We're used to having three or four parents come in and do the Easter party or something like that, the Valentine's party. We're going to need to limit that until we get out of this thing. We can still do some of those things virtually, but what's going to happen with the playground? It's one of those areas that it does, it's not feasible to sanitize that every day. It just can't be done. So washing hands before they go out and when they come back in, sanitize as we can. Classrooms, we're going to do a seating, assign seats for everybody. We'll help with contact tracing. Sanitizing, transitioning between groups when we sanitize. We are going to use the lockers. We're trying to spread them out a little bit, use the lockers on the science wing and the junior high side. So we can spread kids out a little more. How we're doing recess. Lining up, passing periods, all of those things. Transportation, we'll get more specifics on that. Sitting with family groups, load in the back, assigned seats, masks are going to be worn. They'll check temperatures as they get on the bus. Sanitize between routes as needed. Field trips, as long as we can stay in our stable groups and we're not going somewhere that puts our kids at risk, we'll still allow those, but we'll be more stringent on the whether or not we approve that or not. Things like going to, to get our kids to Wichita State, we'll probably not be able to do some things like that. And then all the food service, what do we do with lunch? Breakfast, again, that just changed protocols for getting their silverware and getting their milk. So those, some of these deals just have to be hashed out. And what's going on in the library? We intend to do the life after school program. That's difficult because we're bringing kids from different grades in, but I think that's an important service. We'll keep them down here and out of the library. Extracurricular activities. The Activities Association has a lot of guidance here, but we really need to nail down our plan this week on how we get get back to activities. Things this summer, you know, we haven't had kids in masks in the weight room and in their activities, but we may need to have them in masks when they're on the sideline. It's a little different now than it has been in the summer. Now we're bringing 350 kids back in the building and we're trying to do these activities. So we got to work through all of those issues. So that, that's what the plan looks like. Again, we've got to hash out a lot of things with, with our staff before we're ready to say, yep, we're ready to go. Changed it a dozen times even since then.
You didn't say you're going to have a nurse on campus all day.
Yes, yes. Nurse Lisa will be here all day.
Every day.
What about vendors? When they come on campus, they have to check in at the office and
Yeah.
their temperatures will be taken at that point?
They have to come in the building, yep. We'll take their temperature and we'll have a laminated sheet with those questions. Answer these questions.
Even the person that drops off the milk, he'll have to come over to the south side?
Yeah, and our regular vendors, we can put, you know, if it's a weekly thing, we can put some of that on them. Say, listen, these are the same questions. You take your temperature before you get here.
Okay.
And so just so we're not having to do that every, every time.
They, those vendors or our vendors do wear gloves and wear a mask when they deliver.
So we'll revisit that later?
Yeah. So we're, I mean, you can see all, all the details, excuse me, all the detail in here and we're going to get together and there's even, there's things that have changed since I sent it to you this weekend even. So.
And when is sports, fall sports practices?
Monday. Start Monday.
2020, 21 budget.
There's information on your supporting documents. Starting on page 34. I'll try to give you the quick version here. I know you all have seen most of this already. It's not a lot different. So I'll try to move quickly. Raymond, this is your first time. So stop with questions or feel free to look me up.
I got a question. Did I miss that we were supposed to vote on that for your plan?
Yeah, it's, I don't want to vote on it now. It's going to change so much. So we got our basic operations approved. We can move ahead. So I just have to bring it back for a new approval. So the things that affect our budget, obviously, our legislation at the state level. How do we end up, we look at our cash balance, expense versus revenue. Are we going up? Are we going down from year to year? You'll see our valuation really affects our mill levy. Enrollment, enrollment waiting, federal funds. And then there's some behind the scenes things with the tax income financing with the grocery store, neighborhood revitalization program. There's some tax rebates for those things. So. A lot goes into this. Where are we at with the legislation? An increase of about 3% in base state aid. Local option budget is really about the same. Nothing really changed. Planned increases in base aid for 3% for the next two years. And then consumer price index, and we tied to inflation after that. And there's still concerns about the state budget with this pandemic. There's some real concerns about what's going to happen with that budget. So how did we end up this year? The purple line would be our total cash balance, which would include capital outlay, supplemental general that we can't spend, bond and interest. That was the big drop. And then the blue line will be our operational cash. We need to be up around $600,000 for our two months' worth of expenses. We're not quite there, but I feel okay where we're at. We were essentially flat this last year. And this is on your supporting documents here. You can't read it there. So we look at from year to year and all these funds where we have, have money, what has happened in the cash balance of those. So all the top part is really our operational or expendable cash. What we can use to pay the utility bills and pay our teachers and staff. So we increased about $8,300. So it's just, it's really a rounding error. So we did okay. Capital outlay, we're okay shape. And then these down here, things we can't really spend, the recreation money is not, we can't touch that. We can only give them what we've budgeted. Supplemental general will rise and fall with our tax collections. It just goes to reduce the mill levy for next year. Valuation is where we're seeing our challenges this year with oil. The price of oil dropped. So it dropped about 90%. And we have high valuation. Our mill levy is low. Takes fewer mills to collect the same number of dollars than device. The inverse of that is true as well. The lower our assessed valuation, we get more state aid to make up for, for that. So you can see ours is pretty volatile and that has to do with the oil essentially. All has to do with the oil. Federal funds, we're really about the same level on our, on our federal funds. This year, nothing's changed a whole lot. The CARES Act funds, that's a game changer. The CARES Act funds, that's a game changer for us. We really didn't get all that figured out for the Spark funds until a few weeks ago. So we had things we wanted to order, but I didn't know if we had the money to order them. So we've really been on an ordering spree now because we have about $150,000. We have $183,000 to use in our county's, county commission district. So St. John, our school, the rec commission, ministerial alliance, but we make up the bulk of that. So I know the city wasn't using a lot. And then we still have some left over from last year's allocation. Might help us fill a budget gap later in the year if we do have a.
Can you have any example of what you're buying with the Spark funds?
Yep, masks, hand sanitizer, disinfecting machines, electrostatic disinfectant machines. The water bottles for all the kids. We had to get two additional bottle fillers. More technology. Cafeteria tables. Cameras for our classrooms. And we talked about teachers trying to teach a lesson, but still do Zoom. Ordered cameras that can wear a lanyard and the camera is on a, on a mount that follows the teacher. So the teacher can teach and then they'll be able to record a lesson, so. That's the bulk of it. Cafeteria tables, I don't want to say that.
John?
Yeah?
Couldn't we use any of those funds if we have families that, we have to do the internet for them again like we did last year?
Yes, that's a good question. That's in our plan also.
Okay.
What about the gym cameras?
Yeah, the gym cameras are in there for the live streaming of events, so. So the budget is on your supporting documents. We already had a quick look at it. Page thirty six. I'm going to rehash all of that, but. What is the budget? This establishes our authority to spend the money. We can't spend money, we don't have budgeted, and we can't spend money we don't have, obviously. So we have to fit the cash basis law and the state budget law. Gives us a good idea of how much we have to spend. We set our actual working budget here after, after we get this approved and move into the year. But we kind of have an idea where we're at. You notice on our cash balance summary, we have all those budgeted funds. Certain expenses need to come out of those funds, so. For bilingual, working with our ESL kids, we have to pay those expenses out of that fund. Professional development, expenses need to come out of that fund, so. We transfer money from our general fund, your LOB, to those funds. And those funds, those transfers shows an expense. So you'll notice on the budget, at some point it says net expenditures, it shows the transfers. So that's the difference. That's money we've transferred from general fund to bilingual fund. Shows as an expense, so it doesn't double count. Budget authority applies to nearly all our funds. If we need to spend more in a fund, we have to republish, have a new hearing. So we always budget high on those. Federal funds is an example. We don't have to, we can go over our budget because it's reimbursement. And here's all the transfers. Special ed flow through, we deposit that in our general fund and it has to flow to. We get money from the state for special ed, it goes into general fund. Then it's transferred to special ed fund and then paid to the co-op. So that just inflates our, our general fund budget. One of those accounting gimmicks that makes it look like we're spending more money than we are. So our mill levy, we have three funds for our district, general, LOB, and. And capital outlay, and the other two are for rec commission. So what are we looking at for our mill levy? General is just 20 mills. The LOB, which is supplemental general, jumped up 1.7 mills. That's entirely due to the, to the drop in valuation. So our budget is essentially the same. I'll make sure I answer that, come back to that point too, because it's deceiving. So we're up about 1.7 mills total. So you can see where we're at. When the oil values tanked a few years ago, we're right at that level again. If you look at the tax dollars that we're collecting, it's dropping, even though our mill levy's up. So why is that? Because the valuation is lower, we're getting fewer dollars for each mill. So the 20 mills we levy is, every district has that in the state. That 20 mills doesn't cover our general fund. It goes directly to the state and then comes back to us through general state aid. So our increase in operational funds, about $85,000. For funding, we count last year's enrollment or the year prior. So we kind of know what we have this year. We add our four-year-old at-risk and then waitings for kids we transport, kids that are on free lunches. Kids that are bilingual. So those waitings affect our budget for this year. So if we have a bunch of kids not show up this year, that's where we'll be hit. So we know our enrollment count, but it's not quite half of our enrollment. Budget is based on the waitings, but, but it's significant. So if we lose a bunch of kids, yeah, we know how many we're counting for enrollment, but that waiting is based on the current year, so. So I guess the number you probably want to be concerned with is this bottom line. What does our funding increase look like from the prior year to last year? It was about $75,000, or sorry, about $84,000 from the prior year to last. Oh, yeah, I said that right. About $75,000, and then from last year to this year, looks to be about $84,000. And then in future years, that's what it looks like with 3%. And then tied to consumer price index from there. So what's happening with our enrollment, that's going to matter. So we've kind of bounced around. This was last year's figure. I don't know where we're going to be this year. The local option budget. We levy those tax dollars at 33% is our max budget. We're at that level. We use contingency reserve funds to help lower the, the mill levy. We get some equalization aid. If we look at the local option budget here. It looks like we're going from right under a million to a million 38. So it looks like our budget has increased by $38,000. What we're doing there is we're maxing that out. So we can get our maximum state aid. If we would just say, this is where we want the mill levy to be. So we'll just lower that budget. What that does is lower our state aid as well. So if we keep that at the max budget, then I'll take contingency reserve funds. And plug that into our local option budget. And then I'll just replace the general fund into our contingency. It's the same operational dollars, but really that $38,000 is not going to be spent. It's just a shell game, so we maximize state aid. So if the question is, why is the budget higher? It's not really. We're maximizing our state aid. I know that's clear as a bell, but if you have questions on that, I can answer. Capital outlay, we do eight mills. We lost about $28,000 just due to the valuation drop for this budget. We always budget high here, so it always looks like we're spending double what we did last year. We're not going to spend all that. We just need that authority in case we have to spend it. The authority's there. Recreation commission, they, they budget their dollars and we give them what our community has voted to, to give them through the mill levy. We don't, we don't control those funds. It's three mills for their general fund and can be up to one mill for their employee benefit fund. It's traditionally been 0.7. We try to keep it at that. So the county pays us the funds and we just pass them to them. Each year we have a little bit of extra cash because we, we plan on. We plan on collecting less than, actually, we, we collect more than we need each year just because we don't want to be short. Works in all of our, our funds, so we're giving them what we get, up to the budget. So in summary, we're up 1.7 mills, about $85,000 extra operational funds. Any questions? Next steps would be. Have our hearing. On the 24th. At 7:00 AM, so that'll go in the paper this week. That gives us 10 clear days. We'll have a hearing and we'll approve the budget on the 24th, 7:00 AM. Okay, thank you. Okay. Board policy updates. Do you have those policies in a separate document? I'm not going to go through all of these. I would answer questions if you need it. A lot of it is just legal updates and much of it has to do with changes in Title IX. I did not call the attorneys to question them on this. I'm taking their legal advice. It's what we pay them, pay them for. I would recommend the board adopt those policy changes as presented.
Mr. President, I move the board through the policy updates as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the board's policies as presented. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Sorry. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Library budget.
Our library budget's pretty straightforward. Not many changes. We haven't met with our inter-local board. We have the city library board and this board. And then the inter-local board is two members from each. In past years, we've got together and had a meeting. We talk about it, the library board talks about it. There's no sense in having a separate meeting, so. It was Carl and Derek and then Debbie and Amelia. Yeah, so we just did it by email. Here's the budget. Not much changes here. Just a little bit of increase for salary expenses. And you can see the share of expenses, how that's divided out. And where that money comes from. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but I'd recommend the board approve this library budget.
Mr. President, I made this board approve the 2020, 21 library budget as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the library budget for the 2021 school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, special education assessments.
The special education board was looking at doing 15% increase this year, but they settled on 10% increase. So this is our, this is the assessment that we pay to be a part of the co-op that helps with expenses. So this sheet here shows a 10% increase for us is about $20,000, $21,000. This is needed. I can support it. There hasn't been an increase in the last four years. So this 10% increase, you figure that over the last, including this year, five years. Looking at about 2% a year. I do have a concern moving forward. Are we going to keep having increases like this? I don't know. At the state level, the dollars that they plan to put into special education will not keep up with inflation. But that bill passed, passed muster of the courts, so it is what it is, so. I, I think we will see further increases, but nothing drastic unless something happens. Debbie, did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
We did discuss that this year, well, since we only asked for the 10%, instead of the 15%, we'll probably be tapping into some of our reserves. So I agree with your assessment, but in the future, I'm sure we'll see more. But we're also still hoping that the funds that the federal government has, has promised will come through. And that will help significantly, so. That's all I have to add.
So I'd recommend that board approve the special education assessment.
Mr. President, I move the board approve special education assessment as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the special education assessment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, resolution for Sparks funds.
We talked a little bit about those Spark funds. We have a local committee here in the county that has discussed how, how to divide up those funds. I feel comfortable with where, where that, where that ended up. That's really helped us be able to make easy decisions on, like the masks, getting everybody a mask. Not having to put that on families. It's been easy to say yes to some things. But this resolution basically just lines out. We know what the funds are going to be used for. We'll accept those funds. And if we're not using them, like we said, we're going to use them to address the pandemic, then we'll have to give them back.
How long do you have to use it?
December 30th. It needs to be expended by the end of this calendar year. So there's some legal question of, I, I think almost all of ours will be done, but if there's things that. That are just delayed for half a year and we can't get them in. Can we still pay for them if we didn't expend the money, but we encumber it before the beginning of the year? So there's still that question of, if we encumber it, it should be expended legally speaking. It's got to be spent pretty quick. So we need to approve this resolution, so that's my recommendation to approve that resolution, except for coronavirus relief funds.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the resolution to accept coronavirus relief funds as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the Sparks fund. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, recreational lease agreement.
We've already had a look at this. The rec board has already approved it. We just needed to wait until we closed on the house, or closed on the building to approve this. Since it says we're the owners and we weren't the owners before we, before we closed. So this just spells out they pay $65,000 for the, for the lease fee, just like we've addressed. And this is just a formal approval of that lease agreement.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the lease agreement with the Recreation Commission as presented.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement with the Recreation Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay. Work communications, Sarah on left. Sean?
None.
Raymond? Darren? Debbie?
The only thing I was going to add was that we do have a new assistant director who replaces Jason Marcy on L. And he, I believe, started this week. And I was, the 10% assessment increase, quite lengthy discussion. I think that. I, I know that the construction or the changes in, in the Heston's building are definitely on hold for this year. That's all I've got.
Derek, how you doing?
Nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything either. Okay, we'll keep going. Okay, we'll keep going. Administration, administrative reports.
Well, we don't really have anything going on right now. That's good. I still have the 1920 board goals on there. It's really, we haven't really updated them. I mean, the goals still are there, but get kids back in school, that's where we're at. And it's, that's what we're dealing with, trying to get all this put back together. But we did get the deed for the house, for Griner's house. So we're all legal there. We'll get that filed and be done with it, fill out the forms for that to be tax exempt, which should be as long as we're working on it. If we start renting it, things change. So when we get the kids back, get started on that, we're going to call in the press, do a story on it, make it a big deal. So we want to make sure the kids are back for that. Math curriculum, we're planning on updating that at our secondary level. We're holding off on that. But this changed, we made that decision quite a while back. We still have to do the accreditation process. We did not do our visit last spring. We'll have to do that this fall, but that's kind of on the back burner, but a requirement that we have to do coming up. Preschool and the funding of preschool is kind of convoluted. We get funding for four-year-old at-risk students, but they're in Tacy's class and the special ed co-op has a preschool grant. But we have to work the funding where they get funding for our three-year-olds, which are in Ava's class. So they're getting funding for one of our teachers and we're getting funded for one of their teachers. But it's what we have to do because I can't get funding for the three-year-olds, they can. I can get funding for the four-year-olds. So it's kind of a wash in how it works out. So it's been a good partnership to work through that. I feel good about where we're at there. The enrollment process has been somewhat frustrating trying to get this done. We're still not quite there. But what that's going to look like, parents will have, get a letter or an email that says, here's your kid's code, log into this site and you go through and your student's information will be here. If there's any changes, new students will be filling this out, new. Any changes in information, it will all be there. And then we get down to the end and read the student handbook. They click on it and it takes them to the student handbook. Yes, I read it. Did you read the acceptable use policy? Yes, I read it. So rather than having 25 forms to fill out and turn back in, it's all done online and a lot of it's already filled out. So I feel confident we'll have that ready this week, but I don't know. We've got our backup plan to do paper packets if we have to, but this has been kind of maddening. And there'll be a page where they can pay. Also choose how many lunches they want to pay for. They can pay online or they can mail them to chat. So we're getting it. The north entrance to the building, I know I put that in one of my notes. That was just full of water over the years. There was a time capsule in there and the metal box it was in was just completely rusted through. Everything that was in it was rotten. I don't even think it's salvageable. We've got it, but in fact, there was a newspaper from 1963 in there. But it was, we thought if we had to put stucco back on it, it's not going to last. The brick under there was just rotten. So we decided the best to take it down and they're ready to start blocking. They got all the block in. So it'll look much the same, but we'll look at getting some signage on there too. Heating and air, I've got a bid from Davis. I need to get it in the paper though. I failed to do that. It's got to go in the paper because it's more than $20,000. So I'll put that on the agenda for August 24th to accept a bid there. As you know, the Quavira situation, looks like there's some movement on there. A memorandum of agreement has been signed by the Fish and Wildlife Service, allowing augmentation and some other things. I don't think it's a done deal, but it's progress. So I don't know if anybody had anything to add on that.
Still really don't know a whole lot, it's just.
It's progress.
It's progress, yeah.
Better than where we were before it was signed. So it's nice to have some good news. But that's all I had on my report.
Mr. White?
Everything else is good, we can talk.
Hopefully we can talk about how well enrollment went next.
All right, thank you. Okay, executive session.
15 minutes for personnel, include Mr. White and myself.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included. And that they return to open session at 8:11 in this room.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session to discuss specific individuals hiring or resignation pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under Cuomo, including Mr. White and Mr. Meyer, and return to this room at 8:11. All in favor? All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
My folks do.
Okay, we're back in session. Do you have anything closing business items?
Yes, I have a letter of resignation here from Tara Kinnaman, resigning her position as business and computer teacher. So I'd recommend the board approve that resignation contingent on the payment of the liquidated damages fee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to accept a resignation letter from Tara Kinnaman with the, what you call it?
Liquidated damages fee.
Liquidated damages fee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
I have a recommendation to hire Russell Shields as business and computer teacher for the upcoming school year.
So moves.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to hire Russell Shields as a business teacher for the 2021 school year. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
I have a recommendation to approve Danny Rogers as library clerk.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to hire Danny Rogers as library clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Any further agenda items?
We have a budget hearing on the 24th. I'll get you that agenda. We've got it on the list, two of the school facilities. We'll have an enrollment report here coming up next month. Can I bite for the next couple of lines?
7:00 a.m.
7:00 a.m., August 24th.
Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion carries.